I'd like to open the planning board meeting for March 9th, 2015. Members present is Mr. Reed.
Cronin.
Sean Cronin.
Yes, sir.
Michael Fitzgerald and the liaison from the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Slaven.
Is your mic on?
Mic's on.
Mine's on.
It's just not close enough.
I'm being bashful, I'm sorry about that. Okay, first order of business, approval for minutes for April 14th. Did you get a chance to read through them?
Yes.
I wasn't here, so...
Oh, you don't have to vote. April 14th, do you have a motion on that?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Well, I wasn't here.
Doesn't matter, anybody can second.
You can second, that's fine.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, there's two abstains. Two zero two have to abstain.
Terrible. About, uh...
True.
Next minutes we have on the agenda is July 14th.
I make a motion to accept the July 14th minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Abstained.
Right. Too far, too abstained. Good.
July 28th.
July 28th is the next one.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two two.
Two zero two.
Discussion on Article 21, town meeting warrant.
That would be Diane for Bichant Way and Lynn Road.
Bichant Way.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello.
Good evening, Diane.
Good evening.
That's Steve Donnellus, right?
Yes, that's correct. My name's Diane Murphy and I'm one of three trustees for Beaver Meadows Homeowners Association. And I have some packets for you. Thank you for allowing me to attend this meeting. And we're, um, our homeowners association is continuing our efforts to seek acceptance by the town for Lynn Road and Bichant Way. And we are a diverse residential neighborhood with two cul-de-sacs. I see you have the layout plan there. I was going to tell you a lot, all kinds of things about our residents and how wonderful they are, but I'll kind of skip and go right to the heart of the matter here. One of the best things about accepting our street is that we have lanterns instead of streetlights, so there's no expense to the town to light our streets. The residents do that.
There are electrical lanterns?
I'm sorry?
Electrical lanterns?
Yes, that's correct.
Attached to the residents?
They're, it's, uh, light sensitive.
Snowmopilot?
No, the lights go on automatically when it gets dark.
So who maintains them? The homeowners?
The residents. And we have been pursuing acceptance for some time now. In last fall, J.C. Engineering completed our layout plans, which you have in front of you. And on, uh, we asked J.C. Engineering also to, um, expose or make apparent where the bounds are. And that was done on October 23rd. On October 27th, Charles Rowley confirmed that the bounds are in place. And in the packet, we received his confirmation that those are in place. And, um, it's, I also have included, um, his recommendations of what needs to be done before the town can accept our streets. On that 27th date when Charles was out, he, um, walked the streets with myself and met the other trustees. And Bill Andreade came at my request. He's a paver, if you're not familiar with him. And he was going to give us a quote on what might be done as far as the paving that needed to take place. And, uh, Charles Rowley said at that time that they were minor issues and that he did feel that we were worthy of acceptance. In your package, you'll also find the recommendations that were made. And they're rather minor issues. I don't know if you want to go through those point by point or, um, we do need to crack seal our joint cracks in the, uh, minor openings in the pavement. The streets are basically in very good condition, as far as I know. I don't know what's underneath the snow right now, but, um, and we, um, there was a little bit of curbing in the Lynn Road cul-de-sac that was jutting out just a touch. They were afraid that the plows might pull that out a little bit more. I don't know whether that happened, but that's a relatively easy thing to just put those back in place. The end of the sidewalk on Bichant Way, um, and I've made copies of that. I don't know if you want to, and highlighted exactly what we're talking about there. Would you like to see that map or are you all set with what you've got there?
Yes.
It's only a six or seven foot little stretch of sidewalk. And there is a manhole cover where the electrical, um, whatever it is, is buried in there under the manhole cover. And that's raised up a little bit. And so we'd like to have the electric company, which is N-Star, and, um, and the paver take a look at that. And what we were planning to do is to either have that manhole cover sunk down a little bit further or to grade the, um, pay, the sidewalk so that it's a little bit smoother and less of a dip into the, uh, driveway of lots 14 and then continue around the circle. And the, uh, on item five, we've already talked about the bounds are all in place. The drainage swales, we are having a, once the snow is gone, neighborhood clean out of those swales to make sure that everything, all the sediment or anything that might have gathered there is cleaned away. The signs, the street signs are noted in the inspection. And the town put up street signs that say children on them so that people, our homeowners association covenants state that the speed limit in our neighborhood is 15 miles an hour, but some people were going faster and the town was nice enough to put those street signs up. There is another covenant that was established in 2004 that said that there's no overnight parking, which is an HOA restriction. And we attached the no overnight parking sign to the children's sign so that people would know and would not, you know, have their car towed because they were parking in the streets overnight, so, um...
How does that work with that group home?
I'm sorry?
No, there's a group home in the subdivision, right?
That's correct. A facility. It's not a home, it's a facility. There, nobody lives there. They just are, come in and stay for a couple of weeks and they leave.
Now, they have staff that stays there around the clock?
They have, um, I believe so. I, I...
Will they park on the street or in the driveway?
Um, they park on the driveway.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Have the bounds been uncovered? I noted in Mr. Chuck, Mr. Rowley's report that they, the bounds are, he believes they're in place, but he couldn't locate some of them. Have they been found and uncovered?
Um, I'm, I, I'm not sure I can answer that. I believe he said that everything was in place, but, um...
He did, he did say that he feels they're in place, but he said he, that some of them seem covered and they need to be uncovered. Must have been covered by dirt or something.
They, they were, he, those were all dug out.
Okay, good.
And he put, um, orange.
Oh, good.
And then he also put stakes in.
Perfect. So he found, good.
Okay. And the, um, so I, I would like to talk to the road commissioners about keeping up the no parking overnight signs up because that was established by the homeowners association back in 2004 and it is a covenant.
Alan, could you help us on that one or? Are you guys still the road commissioners or?
No. The road commissioners take care of living on the streets. The Board of Selectmen do everything that's like off-road, like parking lots, you know, stuff like that. So Diane has to go before the actual road commissioners, which is a separate, appointed group of people.
You know, the covenants are filed with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. And they've been in place since that time, 2004 as I said. And then there are small sections of binder, um, areas that the pavement has a little dip and there's dirt in there. So our plan was, I think there's three houses adjacent to their driveway. It's like a little triangle of depressed dirt. And so we were going to, um, put some asphalt, some pavement in there so that, because Charlie said that somebody might be walking along the sidewalk and then step into that and fall or something. I mean, it's not, it's only about an inch, but, um, you're not to comply with this, we're going to have that done. We're going to get three quotes from paving companies and see who's most, uh, the job, the best job for us. But our dilemma is mother nature, all the snow that's around. And we were hoping to get started by now if it had been a normal winter, but obviously we can't do anything right now, although today there was good melt. So I'm hoping that's in another week or maybe week and a half, we might be able to get started on getting these done. So I think we're asking your indulgence because of the weather that we are given a little bit more time to, um, get this all done. At the selectment meeting, the chairman did mention that we would be able to, to do that, so I present that to you as well.
So when you, so you're going to make a visit to the road commissioners next? And of course, Mr. Rowley will be aware of the results of that?
Uh, I'm sorry?
You're going to visit the road commissioners next?
Yes, yeah. I'll, um, I'll get in touch with them next, uh, this week and see if I can talk to them sometime next week. Do they have regular meetings or is that?
The, the road commissioners basically meet when requested. The road commissioners will not have any effect on the town accepting the road though. That's just something, if I heard right, that they want to put in that there's no parking overnight, which is something completely different. You know, so that's not an issue. What's the issue right now is for them to comply with, uh, Mr. Rowley's list and then
Correct.
They actually will have, at least the way we're going to try and work it, is they have up to the day of town meeting to get it completed. So the process is that the Board of Selectmen, uh, basically designate the planning board to come back with a recommendation whether to accept the road or not, which is what we're waiting for. As soon as they meet the requirements George has, you would meet and vote yes or no, forward to the Board of Selectmen and then we go to town meeting. So we have right up to the last minute. And then after town meeting votes yes or no, then the board actually has final decision whether to accept or not. So there, everything is in place for them. It's just a matter of getting these things finished. This has been going on for close to two years, so hopefully we'll get this done for them.
Well, do you think these can be done before the town meeting?
I am, I, I'm a total optimist, so I always would feel that almost anything can be done if you, if you work at it. We are dependent on whether the, having the snow melt and I don't know enough about paving as to whether it's very temperature sensitive, whether, you know, we have to wait until the temperatures are up.
Well, I think most of the plants are probably closed right now to the cold weather.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Hopefully it'll be open by the beginning of, in March, beginning of April.
Yeah.
The worst, just for information, the worst thing that can happen is that we would have to hold off and do it in the fall town meeting. We hope not to, but that's the other big cause.
We have this list and the recommendation of the engineer that these items be addressed before an acceptance, so...
Yes. The crack seal, I think, is relatively easy, isn't it? I mean, I don't know, you, you people know more than I do about that.
I just think you need to address it and it's nice to get three quotes, but, you know, the time's, time's running on these things.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do it in the fall, but I know we had it last fall and now it's spring.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, we do need to have these addressed, that's...
Well, we're going to hang in there. I mean, we're going to push forward. We're going to get everything done that we can possibly get done.
Okay.
And if for some reason it doesn't, then we will pursue it at the fall meeting, but, I'd like to finalize it. All my neighbors are saying, where are we? Is it going to get done? But, um, I, I think we're dependent on, on the weather at this point and how quickly the snow melts and, um, do what we can do.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, do we need to set a public hearing date to, formally?
Yes, we do.
Consider the warrant article?
Yeah.
And how much time before the meeting do we have to have that?
Fourteen, fourteen business days.
Okay. But can we set a date that's pretty close to the town meeting?
You probably could go ahead and set a date that you would, you could make a decision that you would accept the road if all the conditions were met in your public hearing and then it'll be up to them to get it done. And you would basically forward that to the board. I don't think there's any way possible to have a public hearing. You know, when they finish, I think time-wise you might be too tight.
Yeah.
Although we do have the whole month of April virtually because town meeting starts on the 27th.
And we could have some, you know, some progress on that, which would be helpful.
Yeah, you could actually have a public hearing on the night of town meeting before town meeting starts.
That's been done before.
Don't we have to have it 14 days prior to the town meeting?
No, you have to, you have to, you have to give notice of 14 days before the public hearing. So you basically could publish public hearing in the newspaper probably around the 10th to 12th of April and still make it.
We have a regular meeting on the 13th.
Could be a special meeting too.
Yeah.
Town meeting's the 27th.
And the town meeting's the 27th, which is...
But as, as I said, you can, if you're comfortable with what it stands and where Mr. Rowley has left it, you can actually have a public hearing and basically vote a conditional acceptance based on Mr. Rowley's stuff being signed off and completed, if you want.
He had indicated that he, as, as soon as we were ready, he was, he would be available to us to do the inspection.
You can do it if you want. It's up to the board.
We could schedule our meeting for the 24th, correct? If the first meeting in the month is the 10th, the second one's the 24th?
Yeah, you could.
So we could schedule for that date and pending, seeing everything coming?
24th of March, 23rd.
April.
April.
It's a Friday.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's a four day.
I thought you said the 10th was our next...
13th.
13th.
In April, in the meetings, is town meeting's 27th.
Yeah.
I, I would suggest doing it on the 13th. That's a couple of weeks before we'll get a progress report. We'll see exactly what has to be done and maybe...
That if we have to have...
We can make a better decision at that point as to whether we think it's going to happen or not.
We can go ahead and vote to have a public hearing for the 13th.
Excuse me, ma'am, was, was Bill Andreade looking at it with you to give you prices to, to fix this work?
Yeah, he, he, um, walked the streets with Charlie and, um, and the, and, um, he looked at every, he, there's a little bit of cracking around the manhole cover in the Lynn Road circle. It, it's minor. It only goes out maybe eight inches from the manhole cover itself.
And what, what did he tell you? Did he tell you he could fix this stuff pretty quick?
He, yeah. He, he said it wasn't a, a big deal.
And did he give you a number?
No, I asked him that and he said he was going to prepare it and I called him and I haven't, he, he's not given us a quote as yet.
Okay, well, um, right now times are the essence, so you should, you should give a couple of guys a call and, and get that done. It's not, the items aren't, aren't hard to do.
That's what he said. He said they were relatively minor and most of it could be done in one day, actually.
Well, Bill would probably do all that in a day, but you never know.
Yeah.
Two days.
That works for me.
Entertain a motion for...
I'd move we have the public hearing set for the 13th of April and request, uh, Charlie Rowley to give us a progress report at that time.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 7 o'clock, uh, April 13th. So that's a public hearing, but you, you should probably try and be done or, or done near done right around then. Although you'll still have another week or so, but, but I think Mr. Slaven hit the nail on the head. We, we have that hearing, we can give you a tentative approval to the selectmen and then they'll, they'll do what they do with it, you know?
Wonderful, wonderful, okay. We'll definitely push forward and see if we can get some of them to come out as quickly as possible. Um, I, there, there one, that sidewalk is completely covered with snow right now, so...
I, I can't believe that, all this warm weather we've had.
But certainly they can see the, the other issues, so... Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you later, Diane.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Entertain a motion towards Jen?
No.
He's not even laughing anymore.
It's a long ride, he shouldn't be laughing.
Did you... Before we go into Griffiths Way, set public hearing date for annual town meeting for warrant article 14, which is manufacturing homes.
Yeah, probably set it for the same date.
Same date?
Sure.
Good, got a motion on that?
I make a motion that we set the public hearing on the manufactured homes for April 13th.
Your second?
Second.
Major second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 7:30, public hearing for manufactured homes. Okay, next on the agenda, uh, continued public hearing, definitive subdivision plan for Griffiths, Griffiths Estate.
Do you have anything from the town in reference to? Mr. Chairman, the, uh, town was going to review the new engineered plan for the cemetery. That was one of the reasons that we asked the applicant to come back tonight so that the town could have time to look at that, make sure there was no conflict.
I see a folder right here. Give me a second, I'm slow.
Yeah.
Mr. Slaven, do you have any information on that at all or?
The town received a letter from the applicant here about selling the property to the town. The cemetery commissioner, commissioners are meeting, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday. They will be voting, most likely to go ahead and use funds that are available through the cemetery accounts that we can to actually purchase the land because the cemeteries have no more room, there's no more lots, et cetera. And the town is looking to expand the cemetery. So we're actually looking, the town is looking to buy the property from the gentleman and he's already sent a letter to the town expressing interest in selling it to the town. This just came up in like a week's time.
So what do we go from there?
It's up to him what he wants to do as far as pursuing at this point. I'm not going to speak for him, but I know we have a, a special town meeting warrant article that we're preparing to actually go ahead and purchase the property.
Quote-unquote on the advice of council, I'd like to proceed with the request to reauthorize the plan for development. The information that you had is correct, what you just received is correct. Those who were present at the last meeting may have remembered that one of the two complainants made mention of the fact that I never offered the property for sale to the cemetery. So I made a note of that and the following day sent certified letters that gratefully got through to the appropriate people. And I was, uh, somebody be wondering why I was in a position to do that. I told you that I do have an offer and I do have an offer on it. It is a document of negotiation that was contingent upon the reauthorization of this plan. And so nothing has been signed, that's why I felt I was in a position and frankly was happy to do so. So I'm, I am asking, I continue to ask for the reauthorization of the plan that you have and that we've discussed now these four or five different meetings. And nothing has changed in it, nothing will change in this. Given the 20-day period of appeals, there's not going to be a whole lot of difference between, um, the time, according to the selectman's designee who contacted me about the town's interest, said that, that it may be possible to get, uh, me a statement that this warrant is indeed on the agenda of the town meeting. And that's all that I would ask at this point, or could ask frankly, to know that this, there was some depth of seriousness to the obituary from the selectmen. So by the time the, that process works its way to a conclusion and given the 20-day appeal period, I'll be in a position, I'll know one way or the other on which of the options that I have available. I am, my preference is to sell the property to the town though, you should know that, that's... Alan, where does the, uh...
The article has been written already. It's, uh, sitting for us, I believe, on our list of articles to include in the special spring town meeting. The Board of Selectmen, the first thing we do is approve articles to go on the warrant. And then the next piece around is to vote, you know, either in favor or not in favor of particular articles. So this is going, tomorrow we will be voting and my information is we'll be voting in the affirmative to put this on the warrant. So this will be on the special town meeting.
So if we, if we continue on what we... So if we, if we continue on what we have in front of us now, yes, is what his wishes are. If it went before town meeting floor and town meeting voted it down, he's back to square one or he's, he has an approved plan.
If you go ahead and approve what he has, if you, and you, then he can turn around and sell the land to someone privately.
Paul, yes.
Yeah. Could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Mr. Slaven, do you happen to know, do we have the money to buy his land for the cemetery?
Yes.
You do, okay, all right, well.
My question is, um, is there anything in the file, Mr. Chairman? In reference to, we asked Mr. McKenzie for a two-week extension so that we could review the new cemetery engineered plan to make sure there were no conflicts. Is there any information in the file at this point that tells us that?
I do not see a letter requesting an extension in front of me.
No, we, we requested that Mr. McKenzie allow us a couple more weeks so that we could have that new plot plan investigated to make sure there was no conflicts with his two-lot subdivision proposal.
And the other question, did you happen to notice in the folder, Mr. Chairman, uh, the conditions of the past approval?
Right.
For the past permit. I checked my emails this week a few times, I didn't see anything from George, so.
Right.
Yeah, my concern is it's a twelve-foot right-of-way and we've really.
Right.
Recently taken the position there should be a minimum of sixteen feet.
The, the reason that that is that way, Mr. Reed, is, um, the, the applicant, it should be sensitive with, uh, the cemetery issue where they don't know exactly where some of the bodies are buried. He gave the town a twenty-five-foot buffer, uh, against the wall. And, and because of that, he was then somewhat, um, limited as to how wide he could make that access, so. We talked about that the other week, uh, that you were absent. We also feel that the sixteen-foot would be preferred, but we're just not sure if that, he has the space and to maintain that twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot buffer for a no-construction zone.
Well, I see the twenty-five-foot buffer. But how wide's the layout?
Forty-nine feet. Forty-nine, if I remember correctly.
Forty-seven feet.
Twenty-seven?
Yeah. And within that forty-seven feet, is, is that twenty-five-foot no disturbance zone? There's nothing in here, uh, no prior form of condi- prior conditions or anything in the file? I don't have the documentation with me and didn't do anything these two weeks because Charlie said at the last meeting he knew exactly where those documents were at J S and that he would get them.
Oh, J S.
To you. I do know that the major, uh, condition was the buffer zone.
Right.
And the specification that, that, twofold on that specification. First of all, that the buffer so- zone would be owned by the property owners. In other words, the property line goes across the road to the stone wall.
Yes.
And the second condition of that is that that, uh, property from the road to the stone wall could be dealt with cosmetically, but it could not be built upon, no structure could be built upon. Those are the specs that we have been, uh, communicating and have been aware of since the authorization of the plan have been communicating to prospective buyers.
Ten, twelve, twenty-five, yeah, that would be forty-seven feet, 'cause the side yard setbacks ten feet.
Right.
Tw- twelve feet for the pieces, twenty-two and twenty-five is forty-seven.
Right. Do you understand that, Mr. Reed? There's a ten-foot setback requirement off of the road. The ten feet, the twelve feet, the twenty-five feet total give you your forty-seven foot total.
There's a ten-foot setback for?
Side setback off the road. That's why they came up with forty-seven feet, those ten, twelve, and twenty-five.
It's on the front page under site information down the bottom?
Second page, yeah, it shows it.
Oh.
Shows the.
What's the second page showing?
Cross-section, right, in the front.
The side, yeah, setback is ten.
Right in the first page in the top.
Yeah, the front, yeah, setback would be twenty.
Yeah, it shows forty-seven right here, so.
Yeah.
So twenty-two includes the, uh, twelve and the ten.
I don't think so. I think they're gonna make him go back twenty feet from the road. Is it the front setback? Right? Cause his front is now on the back-fill-up way.
You can't make it work. Can't build out it.
Why, why can't you make it sixteen feet, the road, the paved road, instead of twelve feet?
I don't, I don't believe we've asked him, Mr. Cronin.
No, I'm, I'm just.
No, I was gonna say, I think it's fairly new to him, uh, the applicant.
Yeah, I've never.
We talked about it at the last meeting, but not to him specifically, we, we referenced that. The board has tried to, uh.
He go at sixteen feet.
Tried to, right.
Well, that's, that's his question.
Yeah, when, when, when we looked at that, five, six years ago, uh, you know, we, we looked at it as a glorified driveway, basically.
Right.
And that twenty-five-foot no disturbance zone, I know Mike Gifford did come in and they wanted access to go through if they had to maintain the wall.
Correct.
Or whatever, and then stripped, and everybody was happy with that.
Okay.
But we felt at that time twelve-foot was adequate to service the two homes that were gonna go in here for both homes.
One home would be accessed from, uh, the Great Neck Road anyways, the front.
Well, well, that, that was an option that we, we'd indicated we'd drive it was gonna go, but that was created to create the front into the, Alan.
No, that's the law. So it has to be a. No, nope.
Well, I'm, I'm not concerned that, I'm c- you know, when you get up to, to this high score of that house is located, I don't know, that's, he owns this.
You could move that over, right?
Yeah.
You could have this.
I, I hear your concern, I, I, I think in this particular case, I would be, um, leaning towards accepting the twelve feet at this point, only because the applicant has really been quite patient and has done everything we've asked. And, um, I, I really think at this point, this is just my opinion, that with notes in the file, which we requested two weeks ago, I think that, um, it would be somewhat unfair for the board not to, um, consider this application. I mean, subject to the original.
Conditions.
Conditions and. That's just my personal feeling.
Well, you know, except for the cemetery commissioner showing up the last meeting, like I said, we was in a state of shock because we went through this exercise before. Uh, I think I remember drawing the ghost on the original plan. That showed up in there, we were concerned about the dead bodies and this and that.
Right.
And I thought that was all covered back then. You know, things happen. Yeah, I kinda agree with Mike, I think Mike, uh, yeah, we have, compared, we do have compassion, yeah.
My understanding is the cemetery commissioners will be voting for the town to buy the property.
Good.
On their meeting. I've already been, I already have paperwork to that effect.
Good. Well, in that case, it, uh, I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, at this time to, uh, reaffirm, reapprove the, the, uh, the permit. Uh, it's already in hand with all its conditions. Do I hear a second on that?
I would second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Reed, I see.
I'm, I'm just gonna vote no, it's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Votes three.
Aye.
Three.
Three one.
One opposed. Thank you. That's it, I'm sorry for all the delay, Mr., uh, it's been a long road. I appreciate your patience with me and your help with me and, uh, I couldn't be delighted more on the way that it seems that this is going to work out and I thank God for that. Yeah, hope it does, I hope it does. It'll be a win-win for everybody, I guess. Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I understand that that appeal period begins tomorrow, or?
Well, I would make sure you talk to the town clerk and make sure everything's all stamped in and the time starts.
I'll call them.
I would.
Very good, thank you, yeah, no.
Thank you.
You can come visit us in two weeks if you want.
Alright.
That was painless.
Right. I'd like to make a comment on the record. You know, we postponed that applicant two weeks ago because the town should have looked at the new engineering plan for the cemetery to make sure there's no conflicts and they should have pulled the file to supply us with the previous order of conditions.
Well.
Where that didn't occur, that's what prompted me to wanna move forward and kind of, not circumvent, but not enforce our sixteen-foot request. I just felt that the applicant has become a victim now of the town's, uh, incompetence.
Well, we, we, we thought we had all the bases covered, Mike, when we did it quite a few years ago. And, uh, we were concerned about ghost graves, as they call them, and Mike Gifford and everybody concerned at the time called in. And, um, you know, we thought we had all the bases covered, but it's been a long road.
He also a different group of cemetery commissioners now than we had back then.
Well, true, because.
Well, that, yeah, the last, the, the last meeting, when, when the commissioner came in, that, that, you know, tore a curveball, but the, the point being is he's been put off a couple of times now.
Right.
For the town to look up information. I got a question, Mr. Chairman, uh, and, and maybe Mr. Slaven might know, wh- where do we stand with a town planner, anything?
As of right now, they have not hired a town planner, they originally had their request in, they haven't actually posted for the job yet. We do have, Patty Neal has, uh, been working, that's why you're getting minutes now, she's doing a lot of the paperwork, getting the files done and getting everything caught up to date there.
Who is?
Patty Neal, she actually worked at the library and she worked downstairs recently in the, uh, building department to get them all straightened out, which she's done very quickly and she's now now taking care of the planning board, she's there three or four days a week.
Doesn't the lady work in the building department anymore?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I just, for the record, I, I was kind of on the same track as Mr. Fitzgerald, but I, I, you know, there's, there's a guy that's come in here now two, three, two, three, four times and, and we actually still don't have the paperwork we've been asking for, so.
I think a lot of that's due to the amount of storage of stuff all over the place and not being able to have a easy tracking system to find everything, it's not an excuse, it's just what it is.
Yeah, I suppose.
We're in the process of actually moving all records for the town to, uh, the old, uh, train station over by the Bo- old Boys and Girls Club and put everything away properly and, uh, having it dated and everything. There'd be a central storage area so we would find stuff, 'cause right now stuff is everywhere. It's not a very good answer, but it's what it is, so we're, we're working on it.
Truth only hurts once.
That's right. And you've also had Brenda Sampson, that's been out, out almost a year now.
Yeah, yeah, how's she doing?
Have no idea.
Oh, you don't, then no one checks on her? Wonderful woman, it's a shame, someone should call her and see how she's doing. I'll give her a call.
I don't think, I don't think we wanna go there, she has a medical leave and she'll, they, the town has contacted her, it's up to her, it'll get back to us what's gonna happen.
Oh, okay, all right, I just, because someone's out sick, you could call them and ask them how they're feeling.
Has nothing to do with that, I think there's something else involved.
Oh, that's fine, the, the other, the other thing is Mr. Fitzgerald and, and, and for Bob Sohe knows, on the, on the twelve-foot driveway there, this is really what you would call a special case, where you pull into that drive and you want the twenty-five feet for town access and town accessibility to that wall, which is the cemetery, so, um, to me, it's a major league difference than some of the other things that we've talked about. You're, you're, you're asking that person to take twenty-five feet of his property and you can't build on it, you can't use it because we might have to get in it. So that, that was the reason that I bent, 'cause I brought it up to Mike, I said, how are we gonna go to twelve when it should be sixteen? Um, and, and that was the only reason I, I agree with you, Mike, that the town was gaining all the benefit of that, of that space. Not, not the, not the person.
You know, there's always a reason in my mind where maybe this time you don't, you waive it and this time you waive it and they had the space, you, you could've done it and.
Hopefully it's just a moot point.
I hope it is, I hope it is, it sounds like you got a good deal, yeah.
Me too.
I just, um, I'd hate to start doing waivers right off the bat.
Yep.
Good, motion to adjourn. Okay, this time reserved topic for the chairman did not seem to be okay. We don't have anything else, huh?
Way too easy.
Oh, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You already, you made the motion, you can't second it.
Second or two.
Second the motion.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Have a good night.
I couldn't remember being on a planning board.